We need a special meeting to order at 6:30. Please rise and place.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, my nation under God, in the midst of the liberty and justice world.
Roll these.
Trusty Colley?
Here.
Trusty Michael?
Trusty Melander?
Here.
Trusty McCallister?
Here.
Trusty Kleinmark?
Here.
Trusty Neffet?
Here.
President Dilbert?
Here.
Attorney Ed?
Here.
Trusty Roger?
Approval of agenda.
May I come on, should go through the agendas presented?
Proper movement reported, we approve the agenda as presented. Any questions on a motion? Order the favor.
Aye.
Oppose? Public comment on agenda. President's items, GFL contract. I'm going to let Mr. Addis be will or hand the Mr. Kelly if they have any comments.
I'm not sure I have any specific comments, other than that the contract, and I give Sean all credit in the world, because we talk to you pretty much on a daily basis, with your representative from GFL and post-contract with all the reading upon post-changes is in front of you. It is a contract that we have compared to other communities. It's a contract we've compared with other communities with whom GFL does business, and with other contractors' contracts with other. We think it's properly written. There may be a few things we'll discuss here today as they come up, little tweaks to it that makes everybody here on the board happy and makes GFL able to fulfill the contract.
Ladies President, members of the board members Don Barata and Mary Overhanna with GFL in our realm, and worked with Mr. Kelly, we created a number of emails back and forth. The agreement looks acceptable to us. I just have one question. Our attorney couldn't be here tonight, he's in Toronto for meetings. The one question that Mr. Kelly and I talked a little bit about today is 12A. The contract is well-written, it's pretty much mirrors a lot of the other contracts in the area, with the exception of 12A. The nurse and the village is concerned about any issues that come up. We, there is, I mean, I haven't seen anything like this in any of the contracts that I've had of all the last forty years. So it's something that's new to us, a little bit different. If it's something that you folks insist on having, I would just ask for a little bit of the verbiage to be changed around.
Do you have opposed verdict?
Well, with the way it's written right now, the only thing that we had talked about concerns us, that we don't have somebody that just hits a couple of neighbors and starts calling in complaints. As long as they're verifiable complaints, we have no problem. We don't consider a complaint anybody that calls if they're just purchasing, if they want to buy a cart, or they're asking some information. Thanksgiving is Thursday, are you picking on Friday, and stuff like that. Those we would not consider to be service complaints. And the only thing that we would ask is that, we're allowed to be in the village from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So we just ask, and this is pretty much standard in most contracts, that if a bit of a verifiable service complaint comes in before to apply, we address it that same day before we leave. If it comes in a little bit after that time, say it comes in at 3:00 or 4:00, then we're able to take care of that by 12:00 the next day, which a lot of communities are like that. You know, it may be an hour, maybe 1:00 or 3:00, but usually the ones that come in, you know, early, we can get it the same day, the ones that come in late, we get the very next day. And we do, just so you know, that we do have people that are here every Saturday. So if anything were to come in late, we would be able to take care of that Saturday by noon. All of our supervisors, the interim managers, I call until 1:00 on Saturday, as is I. Other than that, that's the only one that we see that we have something to serve with. And what is the village's expectation in the number of complaints that come in on any given service day?
From a legal standpoint, we can put in whatever language makes sense. What we're trying to do here for the village is, you know, this is a small village, and if you get eight, 10, 12, 14 people starting to complain about service, that's a large portion of the village, believe it or not, okay? So we're trying to protect the residents of this village from mounting, you know, garbage. Now, I see that, the way mine is written anyways, it received, and we have, we've not agreed on a number yet, how many complaints those are that would lead to that.
Correct.
Okay, that's one thing. I have no problem putting in either the word credible complaints or verified complaints. I don't think that's unfair, okay?
No, I agree.
Because in this day and age of Facebook and whatever, anybody can come up.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I believe me, some of it has known there. I have no problem with that, I think that's fair to everybody, but, you know, if anybody else has any other ideas, let me tell you this, we didn't put it in there as an attempt to shaft GFL. We don't work that way. But we do have to protect our DVI and your lawyer in Toronto, oh, I think I met, by the way, will expect, you know, understands this.
Sure.
You know, we'll put it in reasonable language that the board approves. I mean, we could agree on that tonight. But we don't need a rising storm either. Now, let me just talk specifically. Seven votes swing elections here, okay? I mean, I've seen it. And if we have people not getting their garbage picked up, they're not going to blame you, they're going to blame these folks.
Well, just so you know, that when I was with city management, my office was right across the street, I was the district manager, and I had, I have a lot of experience here in the village. I ran it for a number of years before it was given back over to waste management, who I worked for at two different times. So I do know the village very well, I know your expectations, and there should not be any problems. We're being, matter of fact, we are, we have the equipment, we have the employees, we are ready to start.
I don't have a problem personally, I don't have any problem with the softening the language, as Mr. Barata has said, because just being read that I'm reading is kind of a...
Hey, our job's to represent you.
Kind of harsh. I mean, it, you know, we could all wake up on one day and say, let's just kick them out.
So just so I understand, one of the prior concerns is that that very last part of the article where it says, "Service is not remedied to a reasonable satisfaction of the village and homeowner before 11:59 on the scheduled date of service, can it be the day after? Can you give a date to do it?"
Yes.
Was GFL 12, what?
At 11:59 PM, there'd be nobody here.
Well, that would be...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That would be the deadline, I have a problem with that.
See, but I thought, I thought when we talked, we set by the next service cycle. I think same day is a little bit, even three business days would be a little bit more reasonable, in my opinion.
You want to keep your garbage for three days or a week?
Not a week, but I think the same day, if a complaint comes in, let's say somebody gets home at 6:00 PM, and finds that their garbage is still there, and the complaint comes in, and they don't have anybody on staff.
Oh, no, the next day is totally reasonable.
But it doesn't say that, though. It says by 11:59, the same day.
I think that's the language that we have proposed. He's proposing the next day at noon, or?
If any complaint comes in after 3:00.
Yeah, the edit says same day at midnight. And then 7:00 at night.
And usually, we give them first thing in the morning when we come in. We don't like to let it go, because people don't want to wait, they want it to be picked up.
Right.
What is our service day going to be?
Right.
So you have staff on Friday, on Saturday?
Yes. Yes.
I just think we have to be very reasonable, too, personally, but...
We want, we'll work very closely with you, you'll see, we're not that kind of company. Don and I are honestly, right, Don, we'll give you all our cards, anything that comes up, you call us. Our supervisor should be checking in at the end of the day?
They should check in every Friday.
And move with someone, whoever you want.
We will, our point of contact in the office is Melissa.
Okay.
And she will need your route manager's number, because she received the complaints, and then she'll forward on to the...
We will bring him in the first Friday and introduce him to everybody in the office. I mean, who he is, he has his cell phone, he has his tablet, and all of them.
And so when the route's completed, at the completion of the service day, which is Friday, he should check in with Melissa, and anything that she gets in prior to, now, our expectation of getting done, Don, what would you say? Because you've done this community before.
We probably will be out here most of the time by 3:00, 4:00.
That's right, thank you.
We like to put additional equipment out and get everybody off the road for the weekend.
So you might have some late sense, let's call it like it is, where people, oh, we, I didn't, they didn't pick me up, and it's set out late, you know? So by 3:00, let's just use that timeframe, generally, it will be completed, correct? And so if it comes in at 4:00 or 5:00, believe me, we'll be there the next day, but sometimes that does happen.
Sure, sure, that's reasonable. You know, I see some complaints in my own subdivision, I can hear them personally, because I'm out walking, and they didn't pick up my yard waste. Well, your yard waste went out at 10:00.
Right.
The yard waste truck comes through about 7:30.
Exactly, the night before, always we try to reiterate that, the night before.
Either get it or you put your yard waste out.
Exactly, or they'll come home from work and cut their lawn, and just, oh, they didn't pick up my yard waste. So we've heard pretty much every scenario, but to be fair, we will honestly work very closely with you, right, Don? So...
Just to clarify, you do have trucks running Saturday to just care what missed pickup cars?
But according to this contract, if that doesn't happen, is everyone willing to, because according to the contract, we're going to discontinue the service the next month?
Well, according to the contract, we have the right to discontinue. It doesn't mean we're automatically going to discontinue. I don't think any of us here are, you know, we're fair, too, you know, but we do owe it to our neighbors to make sure that they're getting the best possible service, especially if we're, you know, changing contracts, you know, Waste Management hasn't been very good to us. They're right back out if we need something, and I mean, you know our concerns, there was a whole committee put together for it.
That's right.
You know, so that's, I can see where our concern is, you know, but we, we're all fair, and I don't think we're going to just have to be able to cancel the contract simply because five houses didn't get picked up. But we do have an expectation that you will work with us and our residents and make it right.
Definitely.
One of the jobs of our supervisor is to cover all the streets when they're done, to make sure that there isn't anything, but it does, does it happen occasionally? Yes, it does. But that's...
I understand that, yes.
Yeah, he has a pickup, and really and truly, he can put it in the back of his truck, you know, if it's just one or two, or whatever, sometimes things happen, I don't know, but that's the purpose of them having a pickup truck, too, right?
So in regards to that, probably, could we just permit into soften the language, regenerate some of the language?
Well, here's what I would suggest, and you knew this right here, and you typed it right here, but the language agreed that it would be credible and factually supported complaints. We should agree on a number, whether it's 20, 10, I don't know. The board would have to suggest to me, because you see right there, we got this number put in, without a number, and that, the number one, I changed it to credibly and factually supported complaints, then agree on the number of complaints. And then, I would, I think that they're offered timelines to correct it is more than reasonable. With those three, well, two changes and one addition, what are the number that triggers this, I think would be very fair, fair.
Do you agree?
Yeah, I agree. I just, if we, if you're going to make those changes and it's approved, then if you were to get the contract over to us tomorrow, we could probably get that signed and vet early next week.
So if the board were to make a motion allowing us to change the contract to save that?
How would we change the language in the home, excuse me? It's not remedied to the reasonable satisfaction of the village and the homeowner before 11:00 PM, which is unreasonable. On the scheduled date of service, how would we change that?
Two, two items, I get it.
The following day.
Noon, was it noon the following day, or 2:00 the following day?
If the call comes in prior to 2:00, it will be served the same day. If it comes in after 2:00, it will be serviced by noon the following day.
You know, and we should just leave it noon the following day?
Yes.
Just leave it at that, because that's reasonable, I mean, I think so, too.
That makes more sense, easier language.
Yeah, noon the following day.
Got it? I got it.
I can pick it up, too.
You got it?
I got it, I did have, I added something, this afternoon, a complaint this afternoon, that I don't know what one of the waters here, but 12A starts out notwithstanding provisions of paragraph 12 of the contract. Well, the contract and the contract documents together are two of the things that form part of the contract together, right? They're incorporated in reference. So I wrote, I wrote not withstanding any other provisions in the contract documents, comma, the contract, comma, and in particular, paragraph 12 of the contract, and the rest is the same. So I want to make sure we're covering all bases for the village here.
Go ahead.
I think if we force make the motion, we should decide on the number, too.
We need to open up.
What do you think's reasonable, Don?
12, 15?
12. We have some streets in the village where there might be five houses, but there might be three houses. So our concern, and I've talked to residents that you've serviced, other communities that you've serviced.
Sure.
The chief complaint that I got was, the entire side of one street won't be picked up. And they were, they had to use an email to contact someone, and I got that from a couple of different people, and they got no response from the email, or they were told they're getting until next week. And I got that from more than one person, so I'm not saying that, they're telling me the absolute truth, but that was my concern, I was the one that asked for this opt-out.
Let me explain to you about one side being missed. Because of safety concerns and DOT regulations, we are not the zigzag or pull both sides.
I understand that, and I know...
Sometimes we'll load out on one side.
Right.
And then have to go dump and come back and pick up the other side. And then people call right away, you know?
Oh, no, I've had it happen with Waste Management, where I didn't have my garbage picked up at all.
But that's one of the reasons that we get that call occasionally, but the truck will come back and pick it up.
Well, yeah, well, like I said, I've talked to enough concerned residents in enough communities to say, that, when that's the overarching complaint, we want to address that with you. But I think 12 is a fair number, because a lot of the streets have one or twelve, some don't. I don't want any part, older part of the village excluded from this, where they have six homes, or they have 10 homes. So, I mean, are we going to lock ourselves down to a number, or lock ourselves down to incidents of a street being missed? You want to leave it a number? And again, I have total faith in you guys, I mean, you're a big company. I have total faith in your ability to remedy the situation.
Thank you.
But we have an older part of the community that I want to make sure is covered.
Sure.
So do you think 12 is a number, a good number?
That's up to you, if this is something you're proposing, I don't...
Oh, 12.
Listen, what?
12? And 12 or 15, this is...
Reasonable? Okay, let's do 12.
Sean, hold your shorthand. Hold your shorthand.
Good, I'm good, I'm good.
More about the carts.
There was a matter, if I may, Mr. President, there was a matter brought up about pre-existing carts that exist that are not quite the size that you people require. It's been, it's been related to a member of this board, that you guys are all right with those, and won't deny service because of those. We would like to have something sent into the contract that acknowledges that.
You can put something in there that, as long as they're owned by the homeowner, we'll pick up the 95 and 65 gallon trash recycling carts that are currently out.
I think she's checking them, sorry.
94, 5, 64, and 32.
Well, the 32 are, I think that's your standard ordinance, 32 gallon trash containers.
I would just prefer it be written in the contract, because a lot of us have life changes, and they move out to different areas and someone else in your place.
Problem comes up, or there wasn't a law, where a community has an ordinance, and it gets mad if we honor the ordinance, and then we get our hands slapped, if we're not supposed to make those up, well, yeah, yes, we are.
So 32, 64, and...
95. You get in there, depending on the manufacturer, it could be 95, it could be 96, it could be 64, it could be 65.
And then did you want to get a piece of all the proper working order of those large carts, please, you said that?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to add something in there that the carts have to be in proper working order? Is that what you said?
Yeah, and once they get the cart, they should keep it in serviceable condition for us to dump.
Okay.
They are plastic, they are guaranteed for 10 years, I mean, it's sort of like an unwieldy kind of expectation on the carts, but if we damage them, and they get paranoid, then you make questions to ask them. If we come across one that's damaged, and I was talking to this my cousin, usually, if it's damaged, we'll dump it once and tag it, then dump it twice and tag it, then we won't dump it after that. And I can give you, I could send, email you a copy of our OOS sticker, what we usually use for stuff like that.
So would you guys like that added?
I mean, I think it was kind of deep into a contract editing wording, it may not be...
That's fine, it's just...
Oh, they operate it, but I had a question really quick about recycling, then, can we use what we have now, or?
Yes. If you have a 65 gallon, I think Waste was giving 65 gallon carts, or the little laundry baskets, 18 or 24 gallon ones?
Those are still okay.
Yeah. We would prefer the 18 gallons, because you don't get as much contamination, I mean, if you do it with 65 gallon carts.
So you would prefer the cart language not be in the contract?
I do know.
Okay. So then, if that's, is that a valid complaint, Don?
No, because the contract doesn't require us to use carts.
Yeah, so we don't want to, we don't want to help down language, but...
But I'm basing this on some of those same complaints that you reviewed, and a common complaint was that we didn't pick up because of the container that was there.
I think the individual homeowner would be notified about that, or would find out once they contacted them, and they would be able to get homeowner and remediate with the, for the, they're not making any unreasonable requests. So if a homeowner, you know, puts out chicken wire with garbage, it won't be picked up.
I was specifically speaking about the Waste Management carts that a number of residents currently have.
Is Waste Management going to pick those up?
I know they're, if you have a cart of purchase weight.
What do you use that? If it says Waste Management, or Rizzo?
We do that all.
There's still Rizzo carts out there.
So again, the common complaint in Chesterfield was that they were getting these stickers on there, that they will no longer pick up waste from this cart. So that's why I'm bringing those up.
Okay, but what condition was the cart in?
Well, he pointed out to me that the cart was inoperable, there's a bar or something missing out, so, but that's not what the sticker says. Probably seen someone else.
Well, but again, it's up to the individual resident, against the sticker to call up and say, hey, and they go, well, they look it up.
The carts, the carts that Waste Management and companies like we have, we pick those up, you can either pick them up fully automated or semi-automated. I think the ones you're referring to in your neighboring community, there was a big issue with 45 and 54 gallon carts that we could not technologically pick up. Those were being taken for a while, and that's where we get back to, if you have an ordinance that says either a cart or a 32 gallon cart, you can get in the middle, those are the ones, and when you have an injury, it's $2,000. We can't, the guys can't dump 45 and 54 gallon carts, they can't. You pick a moment to cart, to cart, and it takes two guys to wrestle them into the truck, and it just doesn't work, and that sometimes happens, and that's where the OOS sticker comes in there and says, it's not, it's not the proper container for us to pick up.
And it's over 50 pounds, correct?
It's 50, yeah, 50 or 60 pound is usually aluminum containers, except the big carts. The 95 gallon carts, you can, you know, we'll pick that up 125, 150 pounds, fine, because those are picked up on, you know, hydraulics.
Thank you.
When we get the word out to the residents, we can let them know that size container is unacceptable, use 32 gallon or 16.
32, 64, and 95, or the 95?
Yeah, we can get the word out once we, we'll let them know what's going on.
And you think it sheds some insight, because when you're looking at the complaints, it doesn't say, like, I called and pumped out that I couldn't use it, because it just says I saw the sticker and I'm mad about it.
Yeah.
Any other comments, concerns?
For the verified complaints, who's going to do the verifying?
Most likely me or Marcus, because this is why I have problems drafting it in the first place, because you have confidence in verifying, and I took it out after a while, because I have no language to use. Well, obviously, the contractor, however, has a, an idea that just filing a complaint, you get 10 people together, or whatever number we agreed on, I think we saw, well, if we, somebody's got to verify it. Otherwise, 12 people with Facebook page can bring a contract down, and we don't want to back it. So I guess it's up to the village, I hate to put extrude it, but anybody can decide who's going to go out and check it out, see whether it's true or not. Obviously, you are free to go out and check whether it's true or not also, and defend yourselves against these complaints, which I assume, in your self-interest, you would be inclined to do.
Who are you with, then? Yeah. And I hope it isn't complaints that come in through social media.
No.
They come in through, yeah.
Just clear, no, not social media complaints, no. What I know was, through social media, they can stir the pot to have people send in complaints, and my experience is, they don't have to have any element of truth at all, once they get people stirred up.
So, so now we got an issue with coordinating conjunction in contract, right? And, or, the way I drafted it was, the village or the contractor, so 10 people coming to complain here, but the calls aren't sent to them, so what do you, you guys want to do?
Now you got me confused.
Well, you know, contractors, I wrote complaints to the village or the contractor.
Well, I mean...
Do we want and, do we want just one or the other?
We want, we're concerned about the ones that are falling into this office.
Okay.
That's all, I mean, those are the only ones that they're not concerned about.
Yeah, let's leave it that way, to the village. They know enough to complain to the village. I'm assuming that you people give complaints you act on.
Yes.
And my other assumption would be, and I know that assumptions can be dangerous, that if they got the complaint, didn't act on it, we'd be the next to here.
And that's just how it, how it had worked in the past.
I called them, they didn't answer, now here's my complaint. So for purposes of enforcement and simplicity, to the village.
Yeah, if somebody calls us or a customer service center, then a cubal herb is generating, goes right to the supervisor, he'll come, he'll come in on his tablet, and this is your responsibility to check it out. Yeah, and if the complaint goes to GFL and they remedy it, we never hear about it, so...
In the newsletter, too.
The less we hear about it, the better.
I would say, I think that's fair, because if it's one of them, you're, that's easy to follow, versus if we have a hand order and they go to two different places.
All right. Let's, let's get to that point. If there's no other suggestions, concerns, comments, most of them are in order, contingent upon the language being drafted and managed as an contract, they agree upon... Continuing upon the language being drafted and added to the contract, they agree to my language.
To approve the contract and allow, allow the president to sign the contract and run it around? That's the motion that needs to be made here. It shouldn't take all of a day or so.
Okay, that's fine.
To make a motion, let me approve the amended DFL contract.
The property move that's supported, that we approved the DFL contract with the necessary amendments. And as soon as we get this back, we will send it out to everybody. Any questions on the motion? Roll, please.
Trudy Prymore?
Yeah.
Mrs. Colvin?
Yes.
Trudy Ballinger?
Yes.
Conce?
Yes.
Nancy Ashford?
Yes.
Amanda Donner?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you moving forward to servicing the village. Thank you very much. Have a good night, thank you.
Take your first pickup day back over...
Coming up.
Fourth, third, fourth?
Right in the fourth.
Right in the fourth.
You guys wasn't the first team. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Call from the floor. Call from the table. Just a point, just FYI, the tower repair is done. On schedule, it's actually, no, it's scheduled. They started doing their interior coating. So the repairs that they, the coating that's being applied on the interior, it has to cure for seven days. After the seven day period, we have two options. One option is to build a tower, empty the tower. And then we just have to take, and then we fill it back, and then we just have to take two water samples. The other option is, you fill it, it has to sit for five days, then you take your samples. And it's a totally different type of sample. So we haven't decided which one, I think we're probably going to go to the filled and empty, which would get it back online, which, you know, three or four days quicker. But I haven't been totally decided yet, so... And I know from a pressure standpoint, you know, I've been going out to the local gas station taking, you know, sponge baths. Because we're at it with pressure.
Oh, I have no... I have, I'm hot.
You guys, I'm 35 feet, I'm 35 feet higher than you are.
Well, my husband does dishes in the morning, otherwise it's...
It is terrible.
It's like, how long is this in the last seven?
I heard 6 o'clock's really bad.
I didn't know my wife spoke like that.
I've heard a lot of people, like, they couldn't get the shampoo out their hair.
Oh, it's, it's, yeah. And some days worse than others. I mean, it's just like, oh, my God.
But they did speak, 6:00 AM is when my husband does dishes.
Oh, I can imagine, 6:00 AM, that's rough. That's be rough.
We use our hard rhyb in a few hours.
But, you know, they, they said our tower can, 48 of it, you know, we should, it should all last all of us.
I saw pictures of it, it was awesome inside.
Yeah. Yeah, I was invited to go up top today, and I refused.
I would love to do that.
Oh, I, I wanted to, but my mistress was, you know, she, she thinks I'm such a dingo that I want to string a bungee cord and, so... But the guy that went up, the guy at Dixon went up, and he's going to send us a panoramic view so that we can, you know, see for government, you can just hear everything. You know, a day like today where it's nice and clear. On that note, call from the table.
Waste and Means Committee meeting in 15 minutes.
And I would ask that, if you're not on that committee, that when the meeting is adjourned, that you leave the table, but you don't necessarily have to leave the room. Just don't participate.
Or don't?
Yeah. Because there's a message that we're going to share tonight that everybody want to hear, so... I'm mostly in order.
Most of you good here?
Support.
Thank you.